This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
...for the Brighton Central School District. To begin, I'll turn it over to Dr. McGowan to begin with some of the Brighton Believer Awards.
Thanks so much. As we have said at several past meetings, just like to remind people that the Brighton Believes Council selected 14 nominees last year to receive a Brighton Believers Award, and we are continuing through this year to have them come to be recognized by the school board and our school community. They have demonstrated the Brighton Believes' character traits of integrity, respect, responsibility, kindness, and self-control. These award winners are students, teachers, staff members. But of course nominations are open to parents, coaches, community members as well. The nomination form, remind everybody, is on the website at bcst.org. We encourage people to recognize those around us who are demonstrating Brighton Believes. We have two people this evening being recognized, and I'd like to ask first Autumn Hayes Allen to come on up, please, along with Dr. Hall. Autumn Hayes Allen, the Administrative Assistant to the Coordinators at BHS was nominated by 12 Corners Middle School staff members Katie Lambert, Aria McCusick, Denise Mantell, Jenny Tewilliger, Katie Cantz, and Danielle Edmonds. They wrote, "In January of 2022, Autumn assumed the responsibility of assisting TCMS with purchasing. At that time, she had met none of the building staff and was taking on new responsibilities during one of the busiest times of the budget cycle. Autumn is diligent and will help troubleshoot if an item or quantity is not available, including seeking alternate vendors when needed. When a potential order encounters a roadblock in terms of timing or approval, Autumn lets us know right away. She makes the process as effortless as possible. Autumn's kind and helpful personality comes out in her written and verbal communications. Though Autumn's office is located in another building, she does not hesitate to come to TCMS to meet in person, explain, or approve processes. Autumn is described by TCMS staff as 'a dream to work with.' Put simply, Autumn has done amazing work in the few short months she has supported our building." Congratulations, Autumn, and great job. It is our pleasure to present this award to you. So Autumn, just so you know, the way things work around here, we're all a little bit shocked that Dr. Hall allowed in any way, shape, or form anybody to work with you because you are so outstanding that there's a little bit of a concern that people would hunt you down in another building and let you go somewhere else. So, great job, and thank you very much. I know Tom brags about you all the time, just not loudly enough for the other principals to want to steal you. That's his key. Barbara Morlock, come on up, please. You're not the only one, Barbara. Oh, no. A TCMS Administrative Assistant, and I should say longtime staff member that worked with many of us in this room, was nominated by former family and consumer science teacher, Amy Moran. She wrote, "Barbara Morlock demonstrates the Brighton Believes' traits in many ways, whether it's her voice of positivity in her emails or personal interactions. She shows kindness to everyone she encounters. Barb has supported TCMS at a time of transition and done so with a genuine spirit. Her level of integrity shows in all of her work. Barb shows respect to all. She emulates the Brighton Believes' traits daily in her actions and words. We all know that middle school can be a trying environment. This does not scare Barb." Nothing has ever scared Barb. She exhibits self-control by always being calm and even injects a sense of humor into her work. The mindset has been a refreshing injection to TCMS. Barb is an amazing person. Her ability to make those around her feel cared for and appreciated is a true measure of her depth of character. Barb's heart is one that defines the Brighton Believes' traits, and I can say, and many of us in the room can with experience, say you always have. So congratulations. Last but not least, did want to mention that another award winner who cannot be here tonight was Chuck Kane. He taught social studies at 12 Corners Middle School and nominated by student Harlow Hudenbeck, now an eighth grader in the school. Harlow wrote that Mr. Kane is a great teacher, is nice, and is fast at grading. He teaches us so well, we all get 100s on the test. His students love him, so he should get this as a reward for his hard work over many decades. So we thank Chuck Kane as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is a public and community forum, so I will say two things to the award winners on behalf of the entire school board. Congratulations again, and thank you very much for your service to our community. And then secondly, some of you may have to pursue such items as homework, other work at the house, and things like that. So if you need to go now, you are welcome to. If you'd like to stay, that's okay, too. In regards to this being a public forum, if any member of the community would like to get up and speak and provide feedback in any way, shape, or form to us, we are more than open to hear that. Is anybody here that would like to speak? Principal Tappin, you're set? Anybody? Are there a couple of law and government students? Wave, wave, wave.
This would be the best choice ever for a meeting to come to, by the way. Congratulations.
This counts, right? This is credit? You're here?
That's up to Dr. Hall, for sure. No?
Okay, any other comments, questions from the school board?
I'd say tune into the YouTube channel where our meeting from earlier was posted, or is posted, will be posted with the blueprint updates. Lots of great information about what's happening in the district, and of course, the concept of community feedback is definitely not limited to tonight. Every board meeting, there's public comment, and of course, we always gather public feedback through many emails and phone calls and any interaction, so people are always willing to do that as well.
Well, the documents that are shared at the public board meeting are always posted to the website as well, so they are immediately accessible. Do I motion to adjourn the community forum? Motion to adjourn this community forum.
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Good evening, and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board Meeting for Tuesday, November 8th. Call to order. I will note that this meeting tonight is being done in a little different order. We have a business meeting at 5:00, and then we will be back in here at 7:00 for a community forum, which will include presentation of some of the Brighton Believer Awards. That's always a lot of fun. To begin with, we allow at any public meeting the opportunity for public participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to get up and speak? Seeing none, we will move to approve the agenda. You all have the agenda in front of you. Some motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Moved by Eleanor?
Second.
Seconded by Susan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we'll do the approval of the minutes from the last meeting, the October 25th Business Meeting. We've had a chance to review those minutes. Does anyone have any changes or edits to those minutes as received? Motion to approve the minutes of the October 25th meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Jaleen?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will note, for our agenda, item five, it is the Brighton Believer Awards, and we have decided to move those to the 7:00 Community Forum. Next up, we have our first budget outlook. I think Kevin always calls this a period of prognostication, but we'll turn it over -- we'll turn it over to Lou as we start to talk about the budget for the next year. Lou Alimo.
Thank you. Good evening. So this is our opportunity to reflect on the year that we just closed, look at trends and things that we're identifying this year, and then use those trends to begin to set some assumptions and expectations going into the next school year, or next budget year, excuse me. So this is our budget cycle, where we always present where we are in the process. So right now, over the summer months and into the fall months, the instructional administration is evaluating the results from the prior year, doing a needs assessment and identifying issues. I'm listening intently for what's that mean, what that means for cost implications, staffing implications, so I'm participating in those discussions, but a lot of the work right now is with the instructional administration. So to reflect on the year that we just finished, so the Board of Education adopted our external financial statements that reflected these numbers. But what we show in just our general monthly financial reports is by object, and we look at expenditure trends, and then we look at unencumbered balances, essentially where we're gaining surplus at year end. So starting with the graph on the left-hand side here, you can see salary and benefits is our, obviously, our biggest expense, where we're a people industry. And you see the significant increase in staffing costs. Part of that is because of the implementation of the full-day kindergarten. We also have the minimum wage adjustment, if you will, so that contributed to increased expenditures. We're looking at, you know, stability in our debt, which is good. We're fully phased in our 2017 project, but then we have some incremental costs here, contract transportation, we talked about a lot last year, BOC services, we've talked about. So we're looking at those trends, and we're looking at how those are going to project into the future. When we look at our unencumbered balances on the right-hand side here, we look at the last couple of years, and we have our COVID years here, which generated a little bit more surplus. We were budgeting for full programming, and we had some, we realized some savings under the, obviously with the shutdown year, and then with the hybrid. Last year, we cut into our margins, if you will, pretty significantly, and you see the drop-off in our unencumbered balances, especially in salaries, as we did the minimum wage adjustment, as we brought on staff, as we had shortages in different areas, we had long-term substitutes, things like that. And where we opened the year is more consistent with the prior years, even before COVID. So what's most important to me, as we opened up September and as we go through October, is looking at the unencumbered balances and salaries and benefits. So that's where I'm looking at, how is our budget, actual projections in those areas? How would our staffing FTEs compare to what we had budgeted? So we're in pretty good shape. I will expect, you know, areas, you know, to be cutting into some of the other areas, especially this, other supplies and services. We'd spend that down, of course, the year. There's not a really good projection model for that, but at least we have a good start and foundation and financial strength heading into the 22, 23 year. The things that I'm worried about, you know, we'll talk about in a second, but what I want to do is take this opportunity to show our reserves and where they were in 2017 prior to our capital project and where they are right now. And I think this illustrates how our business risks have changed over these last five years. If you look on this side of the graph, we had most of our money in the capital reserves. We spent a good chunk of that over these last few years with the investment of the 2017 project. We also have money in our retirement, and that's our stability. So as rates go up incrementally, and we need to protect tax cap and instability in the tax levy, we have the opportunity to dip into our retirement. Appropriated fund balance, that's the amount of money left over at one year that we roll into the next year, so $2.6 million. And then you have some other expense-based reserves that we set aside for liabilities that we recognize. And you'll notice we had this $100,000 reserve right here. The intent of that in 2017 was as we were working towards a one-to-one program, we established an insurance reserve to, for break-fix. Fast forward to 2022, we are a fully one-to-one district post-COVID, and we've built that money into our general fund budget. So there's not a need for that insurance reserve anymore. However, business risks have changed, and now we have $7.7 million in our insurance reserve, and we redefine the purpose of that for uninsured claims under the Child Victims Act, and we also have set aside money now for cybersecurity risks. So we're essentially self-insuring for cybersecurity risks using that same $100,000 reserve. So $7.7 million in insurance, and you can see our capital is down to $6 million. So I hope as those risks transfer, that we'll be able to, over these next five years, put more money into our capital reserve as we look towards more investment in our buildings. We've seen we've built up our retirement. Again, that's for stability of operations, so as rates increase, you know, we have protection in that regard. And we have increased our appropriated fund balance, again, from $2.6 million to $3.4 million. Some of that was because of the full daycare, the one-time incentive aid. That was expected to be paid over a multi-year period. The state reverted back to an old rule, so we appropriated more money just to phase in that, and we'll have to expect to fully fund that with tax levy dollars, prospective tax levy dollars over these next couple of years. So part of my advocacy to the superintendent and to the Board of Education would get this, would be to get this $3.4 million back to the $2.6, so that way I can better manage risk margins within the budget to what we're appropriating in future years. So here's our history and the promise of foundation aid. You can see the long journey that we've had, but we finally made it where we're expecting full funding in the 24, 25 school year. I'm sorry, 24, 25 school year. My concern is that's great, and that's going to help us tremendously as with the expiration of the federal funds and with the inflationary costs that we're experiencing, but we have really no idea what it's going to look like once foundation aid is phased in. So my concern with the reoccurring revenues from state aid that aren't expense-driven, we're just not sure what that's going to look like going forward, and how is the state going to be able to help us keep up with the inflationary costs from mandates and the escalation of costs? So that's definitely a future concern that we'll always be mindful of as we're managing our reserves and as we're budgeting for our risks in the budget. So here's the federal, use of federal dollars, and you can see the three different buckets and the dollars that are allocated, and importantly, the expiration dates. So at this time, I'd like to invite Mrs. Bagnola and Dr. Rio just to talk about how we're using those federal dollars and the impact and the planning that's going into the expiration of those monies and how we can continue to build capacity and continuity of program for some pretty important services that we're providing to our school community.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. So I'm going to speak a little bit to the green and the blue columns here, the positions and the professional development we've provided to teachers and that all the positions that we put in place to support our students and curriculum and instruction and mental health, which Mrs. Bagnola will speak to shortly. But some of the positions we've created are already built into the budget to carry over as we move forward, including the instructional support that's been put in place for technology for K-5 and for 612. So that tech integration piece was something that we really needed in the district to carry that, our one-to-one devices and returning from COVID, and especially during hybrid and remote and all of the different things we had going on as far as technology goes. Those positions will carry through as we move into the general budget. In terms of some of the other positions that are listed here, our intervention positions, our literacy intervention, our math intervention, and then our K-5 and 612 math intervention leaders, those have been really, really powerful positions as well in terms of the support provided for both staff, so they can be the best they can be for students as far as learning the curriculum and supporting with interventions needed, and also the adults that are actually working with kids, one-to-one and small groups at the 612 level and at Front Road as well. So that has been an increase in a math intervention teacher at TCMS and BHS who has been working with students at the tier-three level, and we haven't had anyone in that position prior. So she's been really able to target kids' needs who have bigger gaps, who need more intensive support, who need a greater frequency of support, and we've seen the same thing at the reading level in ELA. So we have a reading teacher at 612. We haven't had somebody at the high school before in reading. We've had a teacher at the middle school, but increasing that position to support, again, in the same exact way, so tier-three, so those kids who need more intensive or greater frequency of support have been able to receive that through the use of these funds, and we've been better able to meet the needs of our students. Additionally, our math intervention leaders at the K-5 level and the 612 level have helped teachers to narrow down the curriculum, especially at the 612 level, that they were teaching in terms of all the gaps that the students came in with following our return to full-time instruction, and that has been a huge asset to our teachers to prioritize curriculum and to design assessments that work for our students and also intervention that works for our students. Where are the gaps? What's the curriculum that we need to address it? How do we group our kids? And regular looking at data across both of those positions, multiple times through the school year, looking at how students are doing and regrouping students and providing the supports needed. So those are all positions that have definitely enhanced our learning for our students. So, you know, of course, I advocate for all positions, curriculum and instruction. I know that we might have to make some decisions moving forward, but that has helped kind of this gap, especially as we've returned to a more typical school year. Additionally, we've provided some professional development to all of our teachers over the summer and into the fall around social, emotional learning and restorative practices and crisis training, which Deanna will speak to in a moment, but we were able to do that through the use of these funds as well to bring in some supports for our teachers, and that's, will continue to carry on through the school year as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. So in terms of, I'm going to speak a little bit to the green and shift a little bit over to the blue as well. So in terms of mental health, we were able to use the funds last year to hire some additional mental health providers at the K-5 level in particular. We hired a new counselor at Council Rock and another counselor at Front Road to add to the way we were able to deliver mental health services. In addition, we reallocated and shifted our Family Navigator support to shift that focus to the 612 level. In addition to that, we also are really proud of the partnership that we've created. I'll speak a little bit later about that in the blueprint sides regarding our partnership with URM C and Galasano in terms of our clinic setting. More to come about that. In particular, we've been able to use the funds to support training for our teachers in terms of the delivery of some of our instruction related to Bavona, in particular, sending our teachers to the Train the Trainer training. That's a little redundant, but so that people have the skills to then be able to deliver that to their colleagues and go into our classrooms to deliver that instruction at the K-2 level, and our Front Road staff will be participating in that training, one staff member this fall and another one in the spring. In addition to that, we also expanded our use of the Brighton Support Center, in particular at the middle school, so that students could receive more access to executive functioning and skills training, and we could reach more students for the tier-two and tier-three level before we maybe are looking at the special education, the CSE table. In addition to that, in terms of the crisis training that Dr. Rio alluded to a few seconds ago, Superintendent's Conference Day, we were able to provide some training to our security guards and to our teaching assistants that day around an overview of therapeutic crisis intervention, how to respond in the moment, how to also have some more proactive strategies when dealing with students who struggle either behaviorally or socially, emotionally, to access the environment and to help, again, to de-escalate those situations. We've been able to, through this, make sure that we have a mental health support more accessible and more available to all of our students across K-12, and we're really proud of those opportunities. Thank you.
I'll just add another piece for both of us, that some of the funding is accounted for in the general budget, some of it is for PD or for supplies or for intervention tools for teachers to use, and that's kind of a one-time thing, and we're moving forward. And then there are other pieces that we're talking about reevaluating in terms of the intervention teachers and those supports. How can we move forward and include what benefits our students the most in services to them and knowing that, you know, everything won't be able to carry over?
Thank you.
I apologize, I must have seen a shiny squirrel. I missed the last two digits there, but that's $2.5 million of price. So what Dr. Rio last referred to is an important point, though, that I want to highlight. We've been planning for this, right? So over the last two budgets, we've been thinking about it, and we've been double-budgeting for some of these positions, like the tech integration positions are in the general fund right now, but we're claiming them out of the federal fund. So if you think about the relationship between that appropriated fund balance and the surplus that generated in that salary line, we need to realize that that's going to tighten up once the expiration of the funds and we start utilizing those funds. So it's a really important relationship, that appropriated fund balance to the margins that we budget within the different line items. So our budget to actual factors, we talked about. One of the things that we look at, and we, every month, we're looking at our budget to actual to see where we are, what FTEs we may have added in response to student needs. Substitute costs is obviously something, paying overages when we can't find substitutes in long-term instances, that's obviously a premium. So those things that we look at and we do that budget to actual on a monthly basis. The benefits, we're looking at our health insurance rates. We budgeted accurately in what the rates have been. We've been, our consortium has been working really hard to manage expenditures and the health insurance plan, and we've, I think we've set up really good models, predictive models for health insurance. Now, obviously, something could always happen with rates or changes in mandates or something, but we feel like we have a pretty good handle on what those rates are in each year. Utility costs, I'm really worried about utility costs this year. We've seen exponential increases in our utility, both consumption and our rates, so that's going to be something that's going to eat into our margins this year and that we're going to have to make up for going into next year, something we're looking at closely as a Buildings and Grounds team. Obviously, our BOC's services and tuitions in particular, we are experiencing regionally a shortage of programming for high-need students, so alternative programming and the costs associated with that, the specialized transportation, that's something that we work closely with pupil services on, and then just general specialized transportation out of district runs. Keep in mind, we have four schools within Brighton, but we transfer to over 30, 30-some schools. So those individual requests, and where we're fully relying on contract transportation without a lot of room or capacity in the afternoons, the expense adds up quickly. So as we start and as we look into the future years, we start with our enrollment forecasts and where we see our predictions going forward. So kindergarten, seeing some stability, we're thinking stable numbers this year. What we really need more time post-COVID to look at is the number of kids and students that move from kindergarten to first grade. Typically, before, when we had a half-day kindergarten program, we'd see increases of 30% to 40% from the half-day kindergarten program into first grade. I'm still carrying in the model a 25%, 26% increase, so I think we're being conservative in our first-grade numbers going from kindergarten to first grade. And all the rest, we see we had an increase at third grade as well, and we're, you know, expect that to continue, and we'll have to make some staffing adjustments going forward. So just rolling forward staffing and looking at the ratios, you know, preliminarily, again, this is no decision, budget decision at this point, but just looking at the impacts of adding a teacher or decreasing a teacher and the impact on the class size ratios. If we wanted to target 18 at the kindergarten, we would be adding a section to 13 to respond to first grade. Again, if that 26% increase is accurate or holds true, you know, that may require an FTE, so going up approximately three FTEs at just the general education K-5 classrooms. So what we're looking at going forward, obviously, is the results of our collective bargaining and our contract increases, generally about 4%. We will be opening up some contracts with hourly workers, and that is likely going to trend above the 4%, just trying to keep trend with inflationary adjustments. The impact on inflation on goods and services, certainly paper, cleaning supplies, everything that you would experience in your household, we're experiencing significant inflation on our consumables, so that's going to put pressure on our department budgets, our building budgets, so we're going to need to look at that. The health insurance, while predictable, that's still a big number, and that has a big impact relative to the allowable increases under the tax, the tax cap. So we're watching that closely. We're watching participation, and as we have retirements and turnover in staff, you know, we still have an increased number of participation. TRS is stable for this year. We do expect the rates to go up as the rates, as the market catches up with the rates. So while it may be stable this year, I'm worried about three, four years down the line with increases in TRS and ERS rates, but that's why we have the reserve, right? So we're planning for things like that. BOC's services, 3% to 4% are generally a rollover assumption, and then we'll look at participation in the special education services. Out-of-district placements, obviously, those are, it's an important service, but there is cost implications to that. A doesn't follow until the following year. Debt service, stable and predictable. Equipment, again, we've been running a good repair replacement program, but the cost of equipment is increasing. And then obviously, department allocations relate to inflationary adjustments and enrollment trends. The one thing I wanted to point out, that I point out as often as I can, is the capital project and the opportunity for investment. So if we look at the net levy that's related to investment in capital, investment in our buildings, what we've built up over the last couple of years and where we have the opportunity for stability in these out years. With the drop-off of old debt as part of the restructuring 15, 20 years ago, we have an opportunity for about a $20 million capital project. So we've been working as an OACM team with our architects and engineers, working on putting forth a plan for investment to the Board of Education for your consideration. And at the January meeting, I would welcome the opportunity for our financial consultants to address the board and just do a little workshop on what this means and how it impacts on the tax cap, implications on the tax cap. Going forward with the tax cap, again, not too much that impacts our tax cap here in Brighton except for the capital exclusions, and you can see as this drops off, an And you can see as this drops off, in absent a reinvestment in our capital, you'd see our tax cap numbers from an operations standpoint go, go through. So our goal is generally to keep it as close to that two percent as possible with the factors that are allowable, thinking that with inflationary trends, this two percent is going to be the, the standard, at least for the next five years. We don't expect significant growth in our tax-based growth factor. So really, it's just our capital exclusions that we need to manage prudently to have stability in our tax cap number going forward. And this is just the next step in our, in our budget cycle, and ultimately, we'll get to financial capabilities determined, that's generally in the, the February to March timeframe. So still a lot of work to do in these next couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to all three of you. Appreciate your stewardship, Lou, and your teams, obviously, of all of our sort of financial planning, if you will. A lot to look at, as always, our contribution from state aid will be the, one of the critical things that we'll learn about as we sort of roll forward into the future. Special thanks also for the work on the capital planning from a buildings perspective. We're getting a lot of things updated right now, and the students and the teachers benefit from that. Next up, I'm sorry, any questions for Lou? He ran over and sat down, but I forgot to ask him, do you have any questions for Lou? That's all right.
I'd just like to take a moment to thank Lou and his team for the planning they do around our reserve accounts, just thinking especially about the retirement reserve. Any raise in those rates has the opportunity to eat up our entire tax cap. And so having that reserve in place makes a huge difference in how we can budget. So thank you for that attention.
Thanks for your support. Appreciate it. Seth? Uh, next up, we have our Brighton Blueprint Action Plan Updates. You'll hear us frequently reference, reference, rather, the blueprint. It's our sort of guiding document. It helps us focus our priorities and not get too spread out. And I think we'll have as a regular part of these public meetings, updates on where we are in a number of these initiatives. So I think we're starting with Alison.
You sure are. Hello again.
I just want to point out, Lou's second slide is introductory slide with the graphic around the blueprint, right? So our financial plan directly tied to our strategic planning and the priorities that our community expressed as we went into last summer and then a large group of community members coming together to say, and this is what we ought to do about it, this should be our objective. And this is the update to you on all of the things we said we would be working on, what's happening in each of the areas that have been prioritized for the district. We do this again in the middle of the year, three quarters of the way through the year, and of course, at the end of the year. And as we make budget proposals in the spring, they're based off of the blueprint work as well. So, Alison?
Thank you. Thanks for the intro, that was helpful. And I didn't have to say it to them. So these are our five priority areas that we focused on this year, again, to Kevin's point, with the community feedback at the end of last school year and into the work that we started this summer with a large stakeholder group representing all different areas from our families, staff members, board members, leadership team. And these are the five areas that we developed some goals for, for this school year. So before I dive into this, what you're going to see today is you're going to hear from five different administrators to speak to each one of these pieces. And what we've done is just highlighted the work that's been done thus far in this area. So if you look at the full blueprint online, you'll see that there are other bullets that maybe we haven't addressed today, and we'll give updates on those as we continue through the year as well. Okay? So I'm going to kick us off with academic excellence, and this is our blueprint goal for academic excellence, but really, we are focusing on reaching all of our learners, wherever they are, and bringing them to where they need to be. That's kind of how to sum it up. So we're thinking about how to do that with a growth mindset for all of our learners, by being culturally responsive, by making sure that everybody's needs are met and their strengths are highlighted in, in what they're doing and that their individual identities are also part of the work. So you'll see some of the things that I highlight today relative to our goal in this area. The first one is the learning transfer goal development for each content area. And this is a piece of our blueprint that is important as we think about aligning our curriculum across K twelve and aligning common experiences for our students. We have amazing teachers, as you know, here in Brighton. We have teachers that develop curriculum, that are, you know, thinking about how to make amazing experiences for our students. But what we really want to do is make sure that the experience that a child gets all the way through from kindergarten to twelfth grade is thoughtful and aligned. So this practice is helping us really think about how to always kind of reach that goal, that end in mind. So whether you're at third grade or fifth grade or twelfth grade, when you're thinking about each content area, you're working towards that same goal, but just at a different level for our children. So we started that work this year on Superintendent's Conference Day in October by gathering some feedback from all K twelve stakeholders. And that work is going to continue between, actually, next week and then through April with our instructional leadership team and some other teachers that have volunteered to join in the work to help develop the goals and then bring back to the teams for feedback. And our hope will be to share that out with faculty on our April Conference Day to get some more feedback and kind of move forward in our curriculum work next summer, having those goals in mind. Additionally, on that day, we focused on the profile of a graduate, and that will also help us kind of keep that end in mind of where students will be, where we want them to be when they leave us as learners in twelfth grade and how their journey all the way up from K through twelve helps to create that. So Curriculum Council is taking on Profile of a Graduate this year, so you'll hear more updates. Again, Curriculum Council is also meeting next week, so we'll kick that off and more to come on that. One of our goals was to really dive into our panorama data, and you'll hear that in bits and pieces throughout this whole presentation, because we've used it in a lot of different ways, but for our school-based equity teams, our principals have led their teams through looking at that data and identifying, you know, what their focus was for the school year based on what staff or students and/or families have shared with them. So all of our school-based equity teams are looking or have looked at that data and have created a plan to increase wherever the need is for their individual school. Habits of mind, planning continued for our schools that are just starting, kind of getting it picked off at Front Road and the middle school and the high school, and each one has a different plan to reach that goal of incorporating common language around habits of mind by the end of the school year. Lots of great work is happening there, and Council Rock has even increased their commitment to habits of mind with their HAB Lab, which you've heard Mr. Tappin talk about in previous presentations. But you will see bits and pieces of habits of mind now in every school building around the district, and that will just continually grow as time goes on. We've already rolled out Parent Square for staff and families and students at the high school, so check that one, we did it this summer. So continuing to provide support, though, to teachers and to families, and our goal is to continue to utilize that tool, but know that we have a learning curve. You know, we're learning as we go, we're trying different things out, we're seeing what works best, but we're working towards that goal of having everyone communicate on Parent Square. And then an ongoing piece that you'll hear about this school year is the technology application review. We have a lot of technology tools in the district. That is not a bad thing necessarily, but a lot of things came to during COVID and when people were remote and hybrid and finding all these great opportunities that were out there. But we kind of want to hone that into a smaller group of applications. So if a teacher is looking for a particular tool to do something in their classroom, we would be able to say this is what we support here in Brighton, and that's through the work of our instructional technology coaches and also Dr. Tracy Glazer, who's working on that this year. So right now, we're collecting data on what tools are used and thinking about which tools best meet the privacy of our students through ADLOT 2D. And our goal will be to land with a list of like the most reliable tools that we can use for our students. So instead of having to find something new all the time, you can say this is something we already have access to within the district, so that's ongoing. Thanks. I'm going to pass it off to Deanna Spagnola for mental health and wellness.
Thank you.
Thank you. So our goal is listed here, I'm not going to read it to you. By getting into the work, is if you look at the blueprint, we have many different objectives to get to our goal that are listed there. I'm highlighting the ones that we have addressed, obviously, since the beginning, well, since the summer and up to this point this school year. I don't want to be redundant, for you'll see some different bullet points on all of our slides. There's some carryover in all of our areas, which really just reinforces that we're all working towards the same common goals, which is really important here. I want to highlight on this slide, while you're, you're glancing around at some of the other points, I referenced earlier, when I was up here before, about our new partnership with Galasano URMC. And right now, we have conditional approval from the Office of Mental Health, and I want to thank Caitlin O'Neil for her work and her time spent working with them, especially with, with working with our six twelve mental health team in terms of developing a referral process, developing scheduled meetings that we meet monthly with that agency so that we are collaborating together about student needs. But beyond just the clinic service, that we're also gaining professional development and collaboration with them. We're really excited about that opportunity. They have, we've shared this information not only with PTSA, but they're also going to be coming and presenting in December. They are the featured guests of the December PTSA meeting. The date is escaping me off the top of my head, but I know it's an, an evening meeting in December, which will be really exciting. So more to come about that. But it is really targeted towards students and families who are facing challenges to access mental health, community-based mental health resources beyond school-based mental health services. So if you are, they are not connected or they're having trouble finding a counselor and they, they have a need, this will be a, an available resource right within the school, which is a clinic setting. And then also a ba- availability to access their main campus setting through, through Galasano. But the partnership that we've already established is very, very strong. We are very, very anxious to get started, and we are eager for that, that green light, and we, the room is set up, we're ready to go. So we're very excited about that opportunity. We began together, both Caitlin, Dr. Rio, myself, a program evaluation that you see listed here in terms of RTI and MTSS, to really streamline our process and procedure to make sure that students, all students have access to all different tiered levels of support, both academic and social, emotional, behavioral, and that work started this summer. And in a couple of weeks, we have a half-day release where we're working together to continue the hard work that's been already put in place. I'm not going to read these, these bullets to you, but you can see some of the different pieces of work that have already been started across all of our buildings. In particular, the direct instruction that started both at the middle school and the high school with Bavona in terms of addressing those lessons. I referenced earlier the Train the Trainer that has already been had by some of our staff, but then future will be coming for those, some of our Front Road staff that'll be participating in that training as well. I referenced that we've been partnering with PTSA, not only to talk about our partnership with Galasano, but also our Family Navigator. Meg Goodman came and introduced herself to PTSA and spoke about that, how the Family Navigator can support both students, families, and staff. And her office is located here at District Office, and she supports students both at the middle school and the high school as well. And I, here as I'm being redundant, I already referenced earlier, too, some training that we provided our security guards and our teaching assistants on the Superintendent's Conference Day on how to be proactive and how to intervene in the crisis. We had the highest turnout of teaching assistants and security guards for the Superintendent's Conference Day sign up voluntarily for that professional development. It was a packed house, both in the morning and the afternoon session, which was very exciting. So more to come, and can't wait to share more the next time. And I'll turn it over to Jeff Green.
Thank you.
I got you. Hello, I hope everyone's doing well. I'm not going to read to you either, so I'll get started. So one of the things I've had the great opportunity to do is join in with the PTS Chair Meetings with all the building principals over here. Thank you for allowing me to, to participate in that. It's given me a great opportunity to learn more. Part of the blueprint is I'm looking at all the opportunities, events that we have in all of our buildings, give me kind of a K twelve perspective. And just to partner and also give like vertical alignment with a lot of the events that we're doing in the district. It looks different at every building, but it's been really helpful, and there've been some opportunities where, you know, I've been able to let each building know how some of the other things we're doing, like we're going to be starting movie nights at Council Rock, which has been good, and, you know, being able to learn from the great success that we have in Fresno is always a great opportunity as well. Curriculum nights was a great opportunity for families to come and, and reengage with the school after our time away with COVID. Very well attended, but as you know, with attendance, sometimes we can, there are, some gaps can come up. And one of the things we found out, especially at the elementary level, was sometimes families, there's a big need for families to have childcare. Our great PTSA was very supportive, but we are going to be looking for next year at ways that we can improve the childcare, because there's clearly a need, but we also want to be supportive of the PTSA, and we're looking at ways that we can engage students and provide support for families so that it's also a safe environment for everybody and we have enough adult supervision during those. So that's something we're going to be working on. Another project I'm going to be working on soon, I was supposed to meet with Kristen yesterday, but we had to reschedule, so I'm meeting with her next week. We're trying to build a family network when, when our new families come and join our school community, many of them, especially if they are coming from other countries, it could be a huge transition. And we want to create a support system with some of the families that we already have in our community that may have already made the transition, when they have maybe similar language or similar cultures, where they can connect with families to help navigate the big shift in oftentimes culture, not just Brighton culture, but also sometimes American culture, to help support that. Our ENL teachers are to do a great job of doing that, but with me supervising school registration, we want to be able to connect families as soon as they're registering. So that's going to be coming down the pipeline soon. Deanna and I are going to be working together to bring back the, I've never experienced it, but it's great, the new family event that we put on pause since COVID. We're looking forward to doing that. That's going to be coming up in January, yes. And I also am going to be facilitating an urban suburban family social, which you're all invited to, but we've gotten some feedback from our, some of our urban suburban families that they would like an opportunity. We do a great job with our orientation, but everybody kind of joins our school community at different times. We like to provide an event where they can actually communicate, socialize with each other regardless of when they have joined our community and make connections, because sometimes, you know, if you don't physically live here, you can sometimes feel like you maybe are not a part of it, and to be able to experience it with people that have a similar experience, that's what we want to do. So we're going to be doing that this February as well, looking forward to that. In the spring, definitely be starting to transition projects that we have from building to building. We had a lot of success last year and looking forward to involving more student leaderships, leadership opportunities at the K twelve. I talked about that this past late spring when we had, at the Blueprint Planning Day. So just looking forward to having more student leadership, K, K twelve. I'm looking into a potential movie night. I know Dr. Hall, we, we've had a lot of conversations, we don't know if it's going to happen logistically. There's definitely interest, but we also do not want to set ourselves up. So we're looking, I'm trying to look at events where we can have families and students from multiple buildings work with each other in a meaningful way. So we're going to be doing that as well. And then lastly, I'm going to be developing a committee to analyze some of our suspension data. Some of you I may recruit to be a part of it. We want students, we want families, we want our staff, faculty to be a part of it as well. Just look at the disproportionality of our suspensions with our students of color and see if we can not only look at the data, but look at the interventions that we are doing to, we want, we want kids to be in school, we want to, you know, more in this equity journey, we want to make sure that we are, our practices are equitable. So those are some things we're doing. I appreciate everybody's time and look forward to working together. So if I tap you on the shoulder, don't be surprised if I try to recruit you for some of this. So thank you.
You know, I look forward to it. Thank you.
All right. So I have the pleasure of sharing about our staff support and building a collaborative culture. So our goal was allowing staff the opportunity to build connections with each other and, and more opportunities for collaboration. So we, the staff came together, I don't know if Dr. Rio talked about this, but on Superintendent's Conference Day, an opportunity to work within their departments and sometimes across grade levels, so they were working on those transfer goals. And buildings have been hosting different social events for staff to connect. Council Rock and Front Road even held one together to bring those staffs together. Like Deanna and Alison talked about, the school-based equity teams are really digging into that data, and for this particular goal, they're really looking at that sense of belonging and related to staff. So each building has kind of set a goal based on what they noticed within their own data. So some examples is Council Rock determined that there was some need for some different professional development, actually, same as Front Road, but different, kind of different goals, but all still related. TCMS has been, has been using an approach of identifying with a problem statement, what are those barriers, and then what are those goals to address those barriers? And BHS is working with focus groups with students to learn more from them and then planning for the spring panel again, because that was so powerful. Building faculty connections, each of the faculties have been giving time at their faculty meetings to really build connections with each other and really taking it a step deeper than just, you know, what's your name, what do you teach? There were some examples of questions that went really in-depth to, you know, what makes a person, what are their experiences?
Each of the faculties have been giving time at their faculty meetings to really build connections with each other and really taking it a step deeper than just, you know, what's your name, what do you teach? There were some examples of questions that went really in-depth to, you know, what makes a person, what are their experiences, what has shaped them? And the faculty is able to connect and build those connections. Another part of the collaborative culture is continuing to use restorative practices to build that community. So this has been a few years in the making of getting to a place that those community circles are just part of our classroom routines. Like Deanna talked about with Second Step, our counselors and our teachers are using circles to give that social, emotional curriculum, but also for different restorative conversations, either student to student, student to staff, sometimes involving families in that as well. And TCMS has shifted their 10th period on Wednesdays to really focus on social, emotional learning. So Danielle and her team have been developing a specific curriculum for those days that all of the students are getting, that are receiving. And part of that is using restorative practices and circles. And that is all.
And related to safety and planning for the future, I'm going to focus on the first sentence. And I hope that you've gotten a sense through the previous presenters that this is, when we talk about systems and training and facilities planning, this is really woven into every area of the blueprint. While I appreciate that it's standalone, you heard Mr. Green talk about family, student and family engagement and connections. And obviously, there's benefits to that from a school safety standpoint. Mrs. McNola talked about the training and de-escalation. Those are all have residual benefits for creating a safe school environment. So I'm just going to elaborate on some of those specific to the facilities planning. And this is a slide that you've seen before, at least the one half of the slide you've seen before. So facilities and our emergency communication program. We have submitted through the state, the Smart Schools Bond Act, a comprehensive facilities program to increase our mass communications, looking at signage boards, looking at the blue light, emergency response systems, supplemental speakers to our emergency PA systems. So in the event of a status change in the building or some type of emergency, emergency situation, everyone is communicated to in real time. They have an opportunity to know what was going on and to respond appropriately as trained. So that's ongoing right now. I'm really proud of where that, where that has landed. I hope to get approval from the Smart Schools Agency within SED, get that PO cut and have the, have the work begin and installation. Another systems that we've implemented, a system that we implemented is LineWise. And this is a monitoring of school technology. And you can see the areas that this system, monitored by a third-party administrator, looking at events, things that are being typed real time in these areas. And soon as something is typed, we're immediately notified if the analyst, if you will, triages that to raise to a level of, you know, three, four, or five on a five-point scale. So our administrators are spending a ton of time responding to these, triaging these, touching base with kids and doing, doing a risk threat assessment and certainly follow-up if they sense a child is in need or a family is in need of anything. So this is a system that we're really proud of. It's a ton of work for our administrators, but it is, is proven to be an invaluable, invaluable tool. So that's just a couple of updates on the facility side. Our building condition survey is ongoing. And as I talked about in the budget outlook, we're prioritizing some capital projects, certainly with safety investments in mind, especially at the middle school and high school. So you'll see those coming as we outline, as we unveil our capital priorities in the coming months. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? I'll make just a couple of quick comments. First, on behalf of the board, greatly appreciate all the work that's being done. Couple of things that jumped out to me. Jeff, you used the word journey because that's all this is. It's not like a destination, it's, we just keep on going and trying to get better. So I think it's important to remember that. Caitlin, you talked about focusing on teacher support. As, we're a school, but strangely, it sometimes feels like we're so focused on the students, which is great. We forget that there's this teacher network behind there that we've got to check in on. So I appreciate that. And it's a little thing, but as we get the chance to go to buildings, I always appreciate this. A number of you addressed the inclusion of our security guards in a lot of the activities. And I always think our building's personnel and our security guards are often the one the kids see a lot and they have the chance to interface with directly or indirectly. Certainly, when we're coming into buildings, we see them as a board from time to time. I sometimes wonder if they're an underappreciated resource, not by all of you, but by our community, if they really understand all the things those folks are taking on. So I appreciate that we're recognizing the importance, in this particular case, of security guards, because I think they're incredibly important and a lot of them make meaningful connections with the kids. So thank you for that.
Dr. McGee?
No, I have nothing else to add. Thank you for saying that. I just couldn't be more impressed with the work that's done and the way this discussion guides the work throughout the year. So thank you.
I'd also note, we're going to find wards. We sort of talked about that suspension data. We need to get more information on that, but we've got to be very open with that as well as with our successes. So appreciate that as well. Now on to reports. This is sort of a date-wise and time-wise a funny meeting because we, many of us haven't had a chance to get to that next meeting since our last update. I think Eliza, we'll have to think, I can see that Eliza is not here, so I'm aware of that. On Board of Education, rather than just do Monroe County, I'll start with Esther and just work this way. Are any reports, committees, or events you had a chance to attend that you want to update on or that are coming up that you want to make note of?
Hiring Practices Committee are, we're determining our dates for meetings for the coming school year. Curriculum Council is meeting next week, as well as the School Equity Base Committee for Brighton High School, as well as next week.
Thank you.
I attended Legislative Committee last week for the Monroe County School Boards Association. We firmed up our position papers, their revisions. A couple of highlights, the committee will be focusing on advocacy around zero emissions transportation. There's a mandate that we convert to zero emission transportation by 2035. And Peggy graduates in 2035, so that feels like a long time away. But when you're making plans for something that will be millions of dollars, that is not a long time for us to do that. So that's of deep concern to every district across New York State. So we'll be working on that a great deal with our local representatives. And then the other piece that really, Lou mentioned it, talking about foundation aid and that full phase in. We've been very excited about that over the past two years, but it's settling in again for districts across the state that that's a, that's a formula that was developed 15 years ago. And it doesn't exactly represent our conditions on the ground. So working with our local representatives and all the folks in our government to understand that the foundation aid formula, in order for it to work, it must reflect current conditions in school. And that's going to be a big piece to push forward for us. It impacts every district in the state, as well as the transportation. And then the last piece that we talked about, again, for all of us, is mental health for students and for staff and that, that, like many mandates that come down from the state, those mandates really need separate funding streams. So lots to think and talk about with our representatives. Instead of a December trip to Albany, we'll be doing a day of advocacy online with our local representatives on December 5th. Those have actually been surprisingly useful. I know we think that meeting face-to-face is, is better, but I feel like we get actually more time and more, we have some more in-depth conversations than just dashing into an office for 15, 20 minutes. So I'm looking forward to participating in that.
Thank you.
So November's Information Exchange Committee is actually tomorrow, and I'll be unable to attend it, but I believe Julene will. It's about how Board of Educations can support their district's focus on DEI, so it's extremely apropos, and I can watch it afterwards. They always record them to watch later. But I did want to, I had attended one in September that I don't think we ever presented on, and it's just, it's applicable to what Lou had spoken about with school safety. And so in September, the topic was school safety, and we started at Information Exchange talking about what does school safety mean? And a lot of the conversation was very concrete, and it was about security systems and metal detectors. And then we stepped back and we looked at things that everyone who spoke about the blueprint spoke about today. It's really deeper than that. It's about connections, student to student. It's about having a person for each child. And so some people who might not connect with their homeroom teacher may connect with the security guard, and that's their person. And so I think the concept of school safety is larger. And so we've been doing that, and I commend the work in our blueprint that's focusing on that. So I just wanted to make sure I brought that back.
Great. Thank you.
And I was just going to add about Information Exchange, that after tomorrow's meeting, the next meeting is in January of 2023. And when I saw that in writing, I'm like, whoa. Whoa, we're going to be halfway through the year before we know it, so.
Anything else?
That's, that's it.
Christina?
The Brighton Teacher Center Policy Board starts meeting next week. Unfortunately, I can't attend next week, but this is my second year on that, on that committee, and it's been really interesting to learn the way that our Teacher Center thinks about professional learning in all the buildings. And then there was also, which I don't think any of us could go to, but the New York State School Board Association's Annual Conference was last weekend, and I heard reports back from the Subcommittee on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And they said the thing that impressed them so much was how holistically the conversation was happening in many of the sessions at the conference, so.
Not just as a separate subject.
Right, not just as a, right, not even, yeah, not as a Subcommittee, a Subcommittee work. So I thought that was really important feedback to hear.
I'll do a quick update first from Mark Kokanovich, who is our representative to BOSI's. He sent along an update which included their full review of ongoing capital projects with campus construction and LaBella Associates. They're also getting an update this week from the Monroe One Restorative Practices, as well as the DEI plan around developing and, developing a welcoming and affirming environment, excuse me. And then they did have, to your point, Christina, a large contingent at the NISBA, New York State School Board Association Annual Convention last week, which happened to be in Syracuse and moves locations each year. I'll make note of the fact that we're not going to hear from Eleanor Oy tonight because she had to scoot out, and she's working as a volunteer at the pole, so we greatly appreciate her service there. And then finally, just from my standpoint, I was at a construction meeting yesterday. I'm going to ask Lou a question in just a second. Finishing out that first big capital project that started in '17, working on a current capital project, and as you heard Lou address in the budget for that longer-term one that will take us out '25, '24, '25, '26, a lot being done in these schools. But the big thing that we got the update on yesterday was, if you were around Brighton this summer, you saw there was a lot of activity on that 12 Corners Middle School roof. There was cranes there at different times, there was a lot of materials. We did have the walkthrough and inspection, final, what is typically called a punch list for the roof at TCMS, and they'll just shout to you, did we get approval from that part of the walkthrough? I know there's another one pending.
Another one's pending, yes.
Okay. So great, great news there. Rain will not come through and get in our kids. So that was BOSI's. Anything else from the board before I turn to Nicole?
No.
Nicole?
Thank you. So as always, thank you for the opportunity to present. It's a very brief but joyous report, as you can see by the pictures of our Fresno musicians enjoying their lesson. It was a quick turnaround from our last business meeting to this one, which also included Halloween on a Monday. And then if you look at the next page, it's from, we have a few submissions from Andy Conroy for BHS. The 12th grade economics class, they actually had the author of their textbook come and visit. He's a Syracuse University Professor Emeritus, and he came in to talk to the class, and they got to ask lots of questions here about what their academics going into college might be. It was really awesome. He also shared that the Shinshinim students came, and he didn't have the photos in time, but they came to discuss how it looks different in Israel versus in America. So he said that went great. And then Dan Wilson and Andy Conroy shared that they had been having speakers come in for their law and government, large group, which is in the big lecture hall at the high school. So so far, they've had Dr. Hall, Bright Police Chief, and the mayor. So nice, or supervisor. So just how wonderful an opportunity that is and how they look forward to more speakers. And that is it. Thank you.
I think Peter's unable to be here from a PTSA standpoint, so I will turn to you, Dr. McGee, to see if there's anything you would like to add.
Couple of quick items. You mentioned suspension data. There was an article recently in the paper that we've discussed, and a Children's Institute Board that we'll be reviewing internally, and certainly will be reporting back to the board on that information, as well as an article recently in the Albany Times Union about the use of timeout rooms across the state. And we'll be following up on that as well. We do have board policy about that and district practice that we'll be updating you on. And just want to thank the community for their tremendous support and thoughtful approach to the current situation that we've been working through, staff-wise in the district. Again, wanted to reiterate, one, that this is certainly a situation that we never feel represents our staff, even though they certainly will feel that way and take great responsibility for the kids that they serve, as we all do, and how important it is to keep focused on the lightness overcoming the darkness in terms of the great work that's done each day with our kids by each one of our staff members. And appreciate that our community has been thoughtful, I think, in responding to a situation that frustrates us all, and we certainly feel a sense of responsibility and will continue to think about ways with the Board of Education that we can talk about policy implications and what does this mean for us in thinking about our practice going forward and our kids never being in this situation. And finally, we've been approached multiple times about Diwali being a holiday on our calendar. We would love to continue to think about ways to be as inclusive as possible in our school calendar, and we will do that as we go into next year's thinking around the calendar and look at where Diwali, that's a five-day festival, falls in that and the one day that we are learning from the community that celebrates Diwali, the Hindu community, which day is most important, as we did with Eid, and we will continue to think about in 2024 when Eid falls and when we will know for sure what day Eid is and how that connects to the rest of our school calendar and where we can find flexibility in that. So we just want people to know we're thinking about that and thinking all the time about how to be as inclusive as we possibly can. And before anybody even asks, I know this might be on your mind, before you pull out your 3D glasses and bring this up, there is an eclipse in 2024 that is apparently a very big deal. And so we will, we need to accommodate that in our school calendar as well. So it is a topic of conversation around how to manage that and transportation at the end of the day, because apparently the world will turn to complete darkness and chaos at a certain moment. I really am sort of mostly sincere about that, but in all sincerity, my sarcasm aside, we do need to think about what the implications are, and the people in the science community are talking to us a lot about that, and make sure that it's a safe situation for all kids and families.
Perhaps the Legislative Committee can work on advocating for a 179-day school year in that particular year.
And then we can all take a look with the appropriate eyewear on that. Thank you.
Okay. Finally, we have the consent agenda. You all have received updates with regards to personnel changes, recommendations from the Committee on Special Ed and the Committee on Preschool Special Ed. There's a number of fundraising activities listed. As always, plenty of opportunities to eat. And two field trip approvals, the Spain trip and the BHS whale watch. Are there any questions in regards to these items on the consent agenda? Motion to approve the consent agenda and the items on it.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Susan, seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
And finally, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Julene.
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.